Okay. Welcome, everybody. We're meeting to order. We have a bit of a changed agenda. Number one's been tabled. After finally getting a hold of our attorney, there were several substantial changes made to our law. So we have to send it back to the county and then we have to have another public hearing. So if we decide tonight, if we agree on everything tonight that wasn't the changes or if there aren't any further, and we can come to a final agreement, then Jeff can schedule the, or send us right off to the county and we can reschedule the public hearing for a few weeks from now. We need five days. So I think that's all we need because we've already heard most of everyone's thoughts on it. We can also have the public hearing that night and have a resolution to adopt or approve a vote that night also. There was, and I don't want to get into weeds or reinvent or re-foil the ball of this again, but I do think there's one thing that I would like to change and that is the 60 days to 90 days as far as the number of days that you can operate the short-term rentals. So I just got to get a vote on that or and see if everyone agrees or not agrees. I don't need to get into it too much, but if everyone understands the 30 to 60 days or 60 to 90. So, Tweeps, you have thoughts on that?
You want to change it to from?
To 90.
To 90.
From 60. I think that was one of the, I think most of the, John Lee wrote a good point. I think most of the laws that I've looked at are at least 180 or around 180. So I think 90 would be a good compromise. But up to whatever anyone, I'm not willing to drag it on. Just asking if people would consider that.
I'm comfortable with that.
Are you? Okay. No? Okay. Tweep?
I'm comfortable with that, yeah.
Okay. So we'll change that one from 30, from 60 to 90 days.
On all, unhosed and unhosted?
What's that?
Unhosted and unhosted?
What do we have it now?
Yeah, both ways.
For both.
We have it both? Yeah, okay. That would be for both. The only other thing, and there was one other, it's the LLCs or corporations. I was thinking if there was a way we could have the principal, the principals of the LLC or corporation individuals, John said we could make that so they had it for hosted, that they would, you know, that they'd be considered. Kind of gets a little more complicated. So if somebody has an LLC right now, regardless if they live in the place or not or host or not host, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's not their place of residence, actually.
Oh, because of property could be held in trust or?
Yeah, I know people that have LLCs and their house might be their office. I don't know.
So how would you distinguish that kind of LLC from a business LLC?
Well, it would be, you wouldn't really have to. It would be that the, if it was, if the principal, one of the principals was?
Was in residence.
Was in residence, yeah. Or, but.
And someone would demonstrate that by providing?
The documentation is currently required.
That sounds like?
Connecting them back to the LLC would be what?
The corporate documentation creates the LLC.
So you would be asking to see that too?
I guess. And that I don't even know if that makes sense.
The corporation.
What's that?
For a corporation, their employee offices.
Right.
I have no idea what the ownership structure is like for an LLC.
Okay. We'll leave this. This is, I guess, that's something we could change or can be changed.
And there are different types to sole proprietors.
What's that?
There are different types to sole proprietors.
Right. Okay. That's all I have on that.
So we're going to?
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
So where do you want to change it or not?
No, obviously that. It's just the 60 to 90 days. Bill, did you just say, you know, we tabled the, if you're here for the short-term rentals, we tabled that. We have to actually, because we made several changes substantial, we have to then send it back to the county and then have to have another public hearing. I thought you stopped in a little late, but I.
Good job.
I shouldn't have let you track that up.
So we're going to set the public hearing date or?
Jeff has to do that. He can't do that right now, but we could set, well, we can't set the public hearing date until you're back from the county.
We could set the public, we need a resolution to set the public, the date and time for the public hearing. I need to look at the calendars. We have a few of them coming up. We have a lot coming up. So until next week's meeting, we'll have a resolution setting the date and time.
Okay.
You'll need to set up a new website?
Yep.
For the updated 100 and I think for 134 as well.
We'll use the same, we'll just, yeah, update the materials. It's, everything will be dated and documented.
It'll be a new public hearing, so I don't think.
It's still the same local law. It's still local law, oh, one of 2021. That's how it is on the website, so I'll take care of that. It'll.
But you don't want to confuse them?
No, it'll be distinguishable.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving along for more confusion. So Resolution 2021 rejecting bid for the garbage truck. So a little history on this. As some may know or may not know, the garbage truck was in an accident and so the frame and cab were all destroyed. We received the insurance money for that. We went back and forth on, or well, then we put it out to bid. After a while, after the specs were finally drawn up, went out to bid, got the bid back. COVID hit and then, and now supplies are in short. And so the supplier cannot, you know, supply the spec-ed out vehicle that we wanted because of parts. At the same time, because this was taking so long, Maria and I went back to our, seeing if we could sub this out, just do away with our garbage and have Royal take over as they do like in most other municipalities in the area, including Nelsonville. So we had discussions with both Royal and AAA Carding and, you know, went over what we have and what they could offer us. Last go around, they didn't give us the numbers, so we kind of just guessed at it and just left it figuring it was too far. The spread was too much. So this time we asked them if they would supply us with bids. In order to do that, we have to get a mini bid out because they're on a state list and so we can, it would be quick. We'd have to get a bid out that would, an RFP, which would state exactly what we needed. What they wouldn't offer is brush pickup or that would be extra. And Sundays would be extra for the runs that we do in the parks and Main Street. On Fridays, we also do a run. They wouldn't do that or that would be extra. Royal wouldn't do brush at all and wouldn't do, or no, they wouldn't do Sundays at all. So the bottom line is that it was about figuring everything. Our treasurer went through all the costs for us, which come at about $158,000 or something for, to run our garbage. This includes our labor, the truck costs, repair costs, gas costs and everything, soup to nuts. And the number at the very lowest that we figured was like probably if either of them companies did it from what we knew was, wouldn't come in under than $212,000. And, or not, was it more, 212 at the lowest. And that wouldn't include brush or any of the other pickups. Also included in our deductions were, you know, getting rid of one employee because we'd be down, say, three employees and lose one employee to kind of bridge the gap. So, so that said, after we're there, it's like it would be, and talking to the treasurer, it's just too big of a gap for us to want to make without raising taxes or getting into a, you know, more than we kind of wanted to or initially thought. So we went back to getting a new truck and in doing so, talking to the person that bid on it, that we accepted the bid, that can't, can no longer supply the truck, we were told to, we'd have to reject the bid and then put it out the bid again. And then that would take, and that would be a short turnaround, but then just the one person that he got the bid has a truck that is basically saved for us, but would take months to get, but at least it would be closer than it was. Want to add anything to that?
Well, you wanted to add the pickup, the lever.
Oh, on the back of the truck?
Yeah, on the back of the truck.
Yeah. Well, we're, yeah, we're gonna, well, a couple of things is one, if we do, we'd like to do the, one of the problems is kind of abuse in the garbage. People having huge cans, which are hard for our guys to lift. They're not hard, but lifting the whole village, 90 pounds or whatever they're, 90 gallon ones. A number of people have several cans that are being used. So one thing was we were thinking about getting a lift for the back of the truck, which would automatically lift it. But in doing that, then we have, everyone has to get the appropriate cans that will work with that. So again, a little bit more complicated. But for now, just the garbage issue was, after our research, talking to these guys and doing crunching numbers, they're just, you know, it's a substantial difference between privatizing and going with our guys, so.
So do we have actual advance from them?
What's that?
Do we have actual bids from them?
No, but we have their base price.
So you're extrapolating from the base price?
Yeah, which is like 30 bucks, 30 bucks a month. I think like, yeah, like I have it or the camp, I don't know what Nelsonville has, but in Phillips Town, it's like, I think it's 40, probably close to 45 now a month for both recycling and garbage. And their number, I think, was around 28 or 30.
Per household?
Per household.
For one can?
For one can, yes.
Per property tax I do.
Right.
So I'm a little confused about whether we can get a truck. The truck we have, the truck we have, we're driving. Can that, can that make it until this second bid? I mean, this second purchase happens, the other purchase of the one they're holding, holding and waiting for parts on. Do our truck keep going till then? Or do we have to bring in Royal in between?
Yeah, I guess it's, we don't have a definitive answer on that. I guess, you know, Bugsy feels confident. I mean, it could break down tomorrow. I don't know.
So as far as we know?
As far as we know, it can make it, yeah.
Do you ever, I know that you've looked at garbage in lots of different ways. And I do see, you know, some folks who put out the single can and then other neighbors will put out seven cans and sometimes it's construction debris. In other places I have lived, you had to buy a tag for a bag or buy the container. And if it were, you went beyond, you went beyond the amount allotted in the tag or in the can, you had to deal with hauling your stuff away yourself.
Right. Well, yes, I thought about that and not for this exercise or going through this, but if we do that, if we do get the lift for the back and we want to go that way, then we would have to, you know, we'd have to discuss that further on and everyone be allotted so many cans. And if they wanted more than that, they would have to pay for that. And that's how Royal does it with everyone else.
Yeah, it just seems like you, it's a way you might rein in some of the, some of the abuse of the stream, right? If you actually have, if you actually have materials that are beyond household garbage, that's your deal.
Well, right now, we're not supposed to pick that up, but we could neighborly do that according to Bugsy. Some people have some stuff picked up. From what I understand?
Some people put out tires, I've heard.
Yeah, some people put out what it is. But I think we can discuss that going forward. For now, if we can, you know, agree on the truck and get that going and then, and then we have time to discuss the next, over the next months, what do we want to do that? And how to do that? And how to get cans and bulk and cost and how that'll work.
So we're rejecting the original bid and then pursuing a second bid?
Yes, we're rejecting the first because of, because of parts and they're not be able to supply it. And then we bid it again. But I talked to a guy personally and at Michelle's request and, and he said that he has one that he can save for us if we turn around, if we turn this around quick enough, so. And even if we didn't, he said we'd have one probably in January. We could get one October, but I wouldn't hold my ground.
Sounds like there's not much of an option.
So that said, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 192021 adopting local 01.
Wrong resolution.
That was the other. Okay, sorry about that. Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021 rejecting previously approved bid to purchase garbage truck, cab and chassis.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? The roll call vote?
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. Thank you. We don't have to vote on putting out a bid. We checked on that. So we will put that out the bid tomorrow if we can. Got to use the paper again. Or bring a lap. Next is Resolution 21 dash 2021 accepting results of fiscal year 2019 to 2020 audit for the Justice Court.
I'm sorry. Should that be 2021?
It should be 2020 to 2021. But 19 to 20, we did that.
Yes, but we haven't done a resolution accepting.
So this is the?
This is for the original, the old one that was done last month.
Got you. Now I understand.
So is there a second one? The other one we?
None on the list.
No. I did not get the results of that till this morning, so.
So this is for?
That is correct.
Fiscal year 2019 to 2021. So I'll make a motion to approve, accept the results.
Second?
Roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley? Trustee Murphy? Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. Next is Resolution 22, classifying code updates as type two action under C group.
Yes. Originally, we had considered it to be an unlisted action. Jeff, correct?
Correct.
Thanks to Ted Fink, who reviewed it, said that all of these changes are administrative in nature and therefore fall under a type two and type two requires no further action. So I'd like to make a motion classifying the code updates, that the public hearing one code updates as a type two action under C group.
I will second that. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. Next is authorize mayor to sign fire protection service agreement with Nelsonville. I believe this is a rollover.
Yes, it's a straight renewal. The only thing that changes is the amount.
Any more?
What's that? Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the fire protection services agreement with Nelsonville.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I still have lack of clarity on who is responsible. Our code, chapter 130, says no person shall make any attachment to or connection. And then the agreement says the fire company shall not be required to furnish any water other than water stored in the truck with accordance, in accordance with the fire company's standard operating procedures or hydrants. And Nelsonville shall be responsible for the maintenance of all hydrants, including but not limited to keeping hydrants free from ice and snow. So should there not be a reference to chapter 30 there?
Not to chapter 30.
I'm sorry, to 130.
Why would it refer to that?
Because this, the agreement is saying that Nelsonville is responsible for them and our code says that they need to come to the village.
So state again what it says Nelsonville is responsible for.
Maintenance of all hydrants, including, but not limited to keeping hydrants free from ice and snow.
Okay. That's their responsibility.
So it's not any kind of other, that says including, no other kinds of maintenance that they're responsible for?
No.
Okay. So the village water department would deal with any other maintenance issue on a hydrant?
Yes.
Okay, it's just not, it's not clear.
Anything else?
No. Did we have a vote on that?
No, we had a second, but not a vote.
We didn't have a vote. And that'll get all in favor?
I need, well, we need a second.
I second.
I'm abstaining from the vote.
One abstention?
Because I think there's a lack of clarity in that section.
Okay.
Okay. What's that? Are you good? Okay, thanks. Next, approving hiring of two new officers, hiring of Jay Martinez and Jay Hippel. The board interviewed the.
Should be the last page.
What's that?
The last page is Larry's recommendation.
If I can find that. Okay, this is from Lawrence Larry Burke, our officer in charge, and requesting a village board approve the hiring of John Martinez and James Hippel. As part-time police officers of the village of Gold Spring. Having met with both, I believe they're a good fit for department, the village. At the present time, the Gold Spring Police Department is staffed with 12 part-time police officers. These 12 officers cover 90, 93 shifts per month and are also expected to cover other shifts such as, but not limited to court, office, officer parade details and commercial movie events, to name a few. As the officer in charge, one of the most difficult tasks to complete is that of scheduling. With only 12 officers and a contractual agreement of providing seven tours of duty per month of availability plus the limitations of hours worked set by law, scheduling continues to be a challenge. I feel that the hire of a new police officer, new police officers will help ease the task of scheduling. Oh, thank you. So that said, like I was saying, we, the full board interviewed both officers and both agreed that they would, that we should follow through with a vote on them. So here we are. So I'll make a motion to approve the hiring. Can we do both of them at the same time or one at a time better?
You could.
Okay. Well, I'll do it in two. Prove the hiring, I'll make a motion to prove the hiring of John Martinez.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And second, I'll make a motion to hire James Hippel. Is it James? Sorry. James Hippel?
Second.
Where he's got the second?
Discussion?
Just that point, four of us interviewed. Tweed was absent from the interviews, so four of the five.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Read the resumes.
I didn't read the resumes.
She read the resumes.
Yeah, she can vote, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Could we make that correction? When, I think I said, well, five of the full board interviewed because there's only four of us. Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Let's see. Next is a, the, to approve the agreement on 29 Rock, 29 Rock Street. This was a suit brought by William McComish and he's agreed to, took an agreement to, for settlement on this case. I believe everyone has read the documents, applies. So I would like a motion to, to approve the agreement.
Second.
Discussion?
The exhibits aren't attached. I don't know if they will be in the final. I'm sure they will be in the final, but they're not here.
What's that?
The exhibits, exhibit A and B aren't attached. The text is, the text is what we.
I have to look at it.
I think John said that it was attached to the original submission. And so he didn't put them in the agreement. And he shared around exhibit A at your request, as I recall. I don't remember that.
I remember you asking for it.
Yeah.
And what he, that was his answer.
Like what he said.
Yeah. Okay.
Any further?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next is resident discussion regarding location of the EV charging station. Just a little background or context. This is, this is, I'm not sure when we started discussing this. It was?
Over a year ago.
Over a year ago. And it was brought to us, and it was an agreement worked with Phillips Town on finding a location for an electric station for, for charging cars. The location that was, was chosen was just on the west side of the tracks at the dead end on Main Street. And there were questions by the resident on the, on the location or concern. So that said, I need a.
In the 50s.
If you could, if you could just give your name and stuff.
Nina Fadell. Yeah, 25 Main Street, Gold Spring, New York. In the 50s, I watched. The basement always had water. Frankie Budney and Mur, Frankie Budney figured it out. Frankie Budney and Mur, Frankie Budney figured it out, him and Murf, they'll dug a big hole, and found a stream that directly flows into the basement. It's the same stream that the kegs of beer and the wine were put in when it was Subway Joe's restaurant and confection shops with cigarettes and cigars. Okay, and I have pictures of that, I can prove that. I don't have pictures of Frankie and Murf digging a hole, but there is a sub-pump down there, when that sub-pump, I mean, the water at twenty-five Main has nothing to do with the river flooding. That water that floods the basement of twenty-five Main comes down Main Street. There are streams, I saw a map with my own eyes, I don't remember who had it. Could have been Larry Downey, I don't remember, but probably. Of all the streams on the right side, Main Street, from the red light down, from Nelsonville down, there's streams on the right side. Budney train is building, always flooded, all the brick buildings on the right side have water in the basement. When there's a heavy storm, that, those streams rise. The floods always came from the floor up, not from the river up, from the floor up, from that stream. It was always clean water, not river water. That stream is still there. I would like an environmental impact, I would like the DEC called, I'm like horrified by this. It's a commercial building, we're selling it to a commercial, it might be a restaurant again, it might, it probably will be a, a restaurant again. Or, or a brewery of some sort. And the two parking spots in front, eminent domain, have been used by the people of twenty-five Main Street since at least the forties that I know of. I mean, you know, and I don't know what else to say, but it's like ludicrous to even think. I mean, why don't you put it in front of the dance studio, see how Charles Rayburn likes it?
Well, first, do you know where it's going?
No. Because you said that...
Second, well, well, we, we, well...
You said it's a dead end, but there's so few parking spots, you have no idea, the people are fighting for parking spots down there. So, all these cars that should be parking at Hudson House Parking Lot are parking on the street and taking residence spots, and nobody parks in the Hudson House Parking Lot. Put their shit in the Hudson House Parking Lot, or down Dogpool Park.
My experience, and even this weekend, with Hudson House's parking lot was full. The other thing is, you can get permits in, in your area for residence, for parking, you can park there anytime with no restrictions.
Can I comment?
Yeah, sure. Just state your name, so we have it for record.
Roseanne Powell, eighteen Market Street. I'm not far from, I'm not sure where exactly we plan to put electric charging stations, but the traffic flow down there is already congested, there's, it's one-way traffic. Yet, if you do put a charging station anywhere in that area, that's gonna take up a parking spot that's already, I can't have my family down, my grandchildren love to come and play at the river, but if there's gonna be more environmental hazards that they would be exposed to, which I do believe, an electric charging station, it's gonna be emanating some sort of true ions that I don't want my grandchildren here. That said, has there been a traffic flow, any type of review to see if a charging station is gonna interfere with the normal flow of traffic? Because a car's not gonna charge in one hour, it could take eight hours, so that's one parking spot, or two, or however many you plan, that's gonna be taken up. And I did listen to the four proposals of the parking committee, and don't recall hearing anything about an electric car charging station taking up a residential parking or a commercial parking. I, I know the village has property that you could use Marathon. Marathon's a, you have winter parking down there. People walk by, but it's not like you're living there on that road where you're gonna be exposed to any type of hazards that might not show up tomorrow, or might show up in twenty-five years when my grandchildren are older. The State Environmental Quality Review Act would be something that could relieve my concerns about having electric, electricity near running water. It doesn't make sense to have it on top of a stream. And you explain where you intend to put these charging stations?
Sure. So, the intention was to have it on the two, two spaces to the left. That would be closer to, at the very end, the ones that are facing perpendicular to the tracks. It'd be the two end ones to the left, I believe there's two. Then there's the manhole, and there's, that's Xed out, and then there's one more, it's closer to the sidewalks on the subway. So, would we, if I could finish, and then whatever. So, it would be, it would be at the, the two that are to the left of, of that, those four spaces that are there. The electrical rea-
So, like facing up Main Street, not facing the river?
Facing up Main Street, yes.
So, that is basically the dance studio?
Yeah. So, those two, those, those two spaces were, were, that's where they were located, and that was where they were agreed on, and we just got the easement now, but that's where it's always been.
Did the parking committee agree?
The parking committee wasn't, wasn't tasked with that, it was just basically for the residential parking permits on this, on the east side of the track. So, no.
The easement states adjacent to twenty-five Main.
What's that?
The easement states adjac- adjacent to twenty-five Main, not adjacent to the dance studio.
So, in the center between the two?
Well, the-
It's on the right-hand side of the easement.
So, the easement's the, yeah, it's to bring the electric across, that's from the pole, correct?
I, I don't, I honestly don't know where the pole is down there.
There's a pole that's in front of, in front of the, in front of-
The water comes up to the ground level, you have to dig two feet to put in them lines. I really don't think it's a good idea. Ditching the whole thing down there.
Well, so, so there was a public hearing recently on the topic.
There's too much water. There are streams from Mikey Millspaws, where the people that boat guns, all the way to Tommy Funtz. There are streams and springs.
I did, just so you know, being here six years, I'm totally aware of where the water is and where the streams are coming through there. And, and I, I understand the pump, and I understand that it's not coming from the river, and I know that that pump has to be running full-time, or I'll be getting calls all day and night. So, I understand that. This, in my mind, and, and from, from what I understand, and our, and Philipstown supervises been down here, highways is down here, looked at it, our crew chief has been down here, Bugsy's been here for sixteen years or whatever, and also Matt Krug, our new, the new superintendent for water, wastewater was down here. I have the maps on where the lines are and how deep they are. So, if we go eighteen inches, eighteen to two feet, I think it's eighteen inches for electrical, and it's dug, that should be no problem, all of the lines, water lines and sewer lines are at least four to seven feet below the surface. And we're not, we're not interfering with the manhole covers or any access to the pump, or won't disturb the pump at all. So, I'm not sure what would be disturbing down there.
Why can't you put it down the train station, there's so much room.
It's not our property.
I mean, I know it's not, but you can lease somebody else's property and not take up seat. Nobody cares about the residents on that side, the tracks never have, and they still don't.
Besides the beauty of, of the Hudson River, has there been an environmental impact statement done on installing these electric battery things? I mean, what?
Has there been?
I don't think there was one, I don't think one is needed, but now the answer.
Yeah, it's needed.
What's that?
Yes, it's needed, well, it's always needed for stuff like that, that's major.
Traffic flow review was also, I believe, needed.
I don't think this will, this will definitely not affect traffic flow.
It's no way near traffic.
Of course there is, because the cars are gonna be waiting in line to get in to use, I mean, how many electric cars are there in this village?
They can't wait in line in the middle of the street, though.
How, how do you know, how, how do you know they won't?
Well, you can say the same about cars.
God knows where to use your charging station. They're not gonna be local residents, 'cause aren't people, when you buy an electric car, don't you get your own plug at your outlet and charge a car? So, obviously, who's gonna use these charging stations? Well, more than likely, visitors.
Well, visitors definitely will be.
And you don't think people are gonna be lined up to use them when one comes out?
No more than they are lined up for parking spots that aren't.
Pretty awful.
What's that?
Did you even ask open space? Can they let you do it out there at Dogpool Park?
At where?
Stockton Park.
No, I didn't, I don't know what cars would, we wanted that somewhere that was, that was, oops. That was more easily found. And it's the way, and it's, well, honestly, if you've seen how many more and more electric cars there are, it's, 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 it's happening, and this was just a start to, to put on, you know, to put one in our village, I, I-
Can I help with date of that public hearing where this was discussed? What was the date of that?
I don't know, we had a public hearing on that specifically, we did, didn't we?
While she's looking at that, Denise Strinkley, Nincher Street, just curious, has any, and I apologize if I missed out on this conversation, but with regard to Metro North, I can't name, I can name many Metro North stations that have charging stations. Is there any, has anyone asked if they're, have any intentions of putting any down there? Because it is a common up and down, the Harlem Line, for sure. Is there any known, known information from them, as far as I'm sure?
I think this, this is, well, the confusing part a little bit for me is that this has been on our plate for like over a year, and we just-
I was just curious, if they've asked Metro North that they're planning on.
No, no one's asked, not that I know of, because I didn't know where this was going here.
As far as response, no one, no, people can't afford the plugs that we're talking about at their home. It's a slow charge at home, which you can do, but it's expensive to get that fast charge in your house.
So, is that gonna be a fast charge, charging station?
I'm not sure what they decided on that, I think there was a super fast charge, and there was a, a fast charge, and I think it was not the slow, but the bit of charge.
Well, I think, if I may, may, the other point that, the other point that may be helpful in understanding is this is a, a project driven by the town, yeah?
Yeah.
Yes, the town, the town entered, the town has funding for this project from the DEC. So, the DEC is not unaware of the project, and the town wanted to, sought to locate the charging stations in a dense area where they would be u, where they could be used for people in the village, whether they're residents or visitors.
Where the mayor's park, you can't sacrifice two, two, you know, pay parking spots, you can't sacrifice two?
We don't have a, oh, if it's a town project, and is the town in control of what the town is?
Yeah, by the, by review. Where you got the meters, sacrifice two meters, I mean, come on, really?
We can, I, I don't know, I don't even know what to say, it's like, we're so far into this and now people are, you know, bringing up, I didn't know there was going to be, you know.
Well, you know, it's always on the third or fourth page, it's a little frigging blur.
We don't have three or four pages, we have one page that isn't on there, and we, and it's on all our websites and everything.
The only reason I know is 'cause Anthony Phillips came and told me about it.
That sounds right. Just for the record, where, just for the record, Nina, where do you live? Because you don't live in the house, right, you live at?
It doesn't matter.
Yes, it does.
I'm here, I am here-
It means, it means for the record.
I am here as a representative of the trust, of the Joseph Fadell Trust.
Okay, but that's not where you live, and we asked you where, and I think that's important.
No, but I would move back, dear, you don't know.
Well, anybody could move back or live anywhere, the point is that you're talking about sp, parking in your area at your house, but it's not a house that you live in, so, just for clarity's sake, it would be good to know that, you know, I think it would be good to be in the record where you actually live.
So, Stevie didn't wanna come, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, it's simple as that.
So, the vote took place on June twenty-second?
What's that?
The vote took place on June twenty-second, it was not a public hearing.
Right. And what year was that?
Twenty twenty-one. That's, that was when the, the easement?
So, it was not a, it was not a public hearing.
Same, June twenty-second.
So, a week and a half of them, right.
We've been working on it for over a year and a half, way before, way before COVID.
And how often is it mentioned on your website?
It's mentioned that every, you listen to every YouTube video of our meetings, you'll hear us discussion.
I mean, unfortunately, discussing the electric charging stations with the town that has more property than the village of Cold Spring. So, how does the town suggestion end up in the village of Cold Spring? Why can't the town put it on their property?
The idea is to, to make electric charging stations more available in dense areas, so that it's easier for more people to be able to have that type of car. And if they're public spaces, right, that there's spaces on the street.
But Roseanne is so far away from where you live, like facing the tracks.
It's not that far away.
These are, this is electric current, it's the same as it's in your house.
And I don't want more, it's going to increase the electric currents in my space.
I, I don't know exactly how much they use, but I don't think it's more than a normal house uses, because I just had one installed for so, a, a customer line. It just has a Tesla, and it's line that goes to your, to your, to your panel, but it's a simple line. I don't know if it's two-twenty or one-ten or what it is.
It's two-twenty?
It's, it's, it's the same as going to, in your house, it's not anything extra or, or more of concern that, that I can say.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
It seems like a number of the areas of questions that you're asking might be better addressed by Crystal Ford, who's the Climate Smart Coordinator for the town, and who spearheaded this effort and worked with the DEC to get the funding and the easement forward. She works, Crystal Ford, K-R-Y-S-T-A-L Ford. I can tell you her, I don't know if I remember, but I can tell you her email address.
This was before Crystal, yeah.
And, and before Crystal, you're right, but Crystal was the one who finalized the easement. And her email address... Is C, S is in Sam, P, well, C.S. Philipstown, Climate Smart Philipstown, C.S. Philipstown at gmail dot com. Or you could reach her through the clerk's office, the town clerk's office.
This is being connected to a current pole that's down there, right, without adding another line to the pole?
No.
There's electricity already down there, we just-
You would have to go underground.
We're just pulling off of a pole, it constantly exists there, so we're not adding it.
Well, the charging station isn't on the pole, it's on the back.
It's, it's the same as if you pulled a wire to your house. You walk by, you hear, you hear vibration, you hear it, it's already, we got the trains.
That'd probably be muffled by the train.
It's true, we got the trains over a hundred decibels. It's hard to show down there.
Okay, well, if you, if you wanna follow up with Crystal and, and, and find out about the, the, the impact studies or all that, and then, and I think we'll do the same, and we'll discuss this further. As, I, I don't know when this was planned on, on, on being installed. Easements were already granted, so I'm not sure where we are in the project.
Ditching. Start over.
What's that?
Start over.
It's all over?
It's like you're starting over with the garbage trucks. You're starting over with the garbage trucks, start over with this, because notice-
Well, if there's evidence of what you're saying, or if we feel that, you know, that we should start it over, then we'll start it over, if not.
Well, that's why I want an impact study, I wanna, I wanna talk to the DEC man or girl, and then we'll see. I mean, really.
Okay.
And, you know, and there's still John Mello, who has to send an email. Dennis from Hudson Pedlar still has to send an email. People are totally unaware of this down there. And I haven't gotten a hold of Charles Rayburn yet.
Okay, well, you can, I'll get, get all the people you like and, and make the comments on, and what, what their concerns are, and we can address the concerns.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
I think Crystal will be a good start for you to get basic information.
Yeah. Okay. Very good.
Okay, thank you, guys.
See you.
Take care.
Old business was hops on the Hudson event, I think we're just discussing the signs, that we're carrying over. My problem is that these signs are gonna be there for four, three months, because they're, things are spread apart every three months. So, you know, I think they should be allowed on the corner of one and Main, where all the other signs are. He has all the huge signs up on the lawn already, and I, I'm not gonna greet the signs on every street, every block.
Will they be, what was unclear to me is if they would be put in place before, close to one of the events, and then pulled and put back out again, or they're intended to stay the whole time? Would he answer that?
When he said, when he said-
Remind me, because there were so many back and forth emails.
When he said in his letter, he wanted to be able to put them up as soon as we gave him the okay.
And leave them for the duration, for the September event?
No, no, he said they would install them, they would remove them, they would install them, they would remove them. These are the, Mayor's Mark, July, August, September. Install, remove, install, remove, install, remove.
I don't remember saying that.
I don't remember that.
I don't remember him saying, I know he wanted to put directional signs up.
The directional's are the ones on Main Street. But the other ones, where he wanted some dock side, some on one side of the subway, some on the other side of the subway, some on nine D, of those, he said he would install and remove. But he also said in his first letter to us, he signed a directional on Main Street. He wanted the signs, the red signs at every corner, both sides of the street on Main Street.
Yes, yes. Directional signs.
But I thought it was in addition to-
No, the red signs, the red signs are the ones that were-
I've got the email here, if that's helpful.
Directional signs, he said, were going up, um-
The directional signs with the arrows.
Were going up near the event, but the other signs he wanted at every corner, I thought was like water mats.
Wanted the directional's at every corner, at every intersection on Main Street.
That's not my understanding.
Please see attached signs for pedestrian traffic flow for the day of the event. The event sign between Main Street and the train station is where we would like to put two signs. So, that's day of directional for pedestrian traffic flow. And then, the others, please see attached signs for pedestrian traffic flow. Can you be sure of the location of the high school? What's related to the traffic person? We also asked for them on Fair Street. Total of eight signs, we would install them when we get the okay, and take them down July eighteen, Free Gomery. Then install them two weeks before August twenty-first, then take them down on August twenty-second, and install them two weeks before September twenty-fifth, then take them down on the twenty-sixth. So, it is an up and down.
But two weeks at a time, I would, I still would put them up, and he wants them on every block on Main Street, both sides of the street.
Yes. Two different, two different sets of signs. What Kathleen just read, or, or the signs that we currently see up on St. Mary's Line. Market Maker, July, August, September, Free Event, I forget what else it said. The other signs, which he wants up and down Main Street, are the directional signs with arrows for the day of.
The day of, yes.
So, two different sets of signs, two different sets of locations. The Main Street ones are the directional day of. The other ones, are the ones that you can currently see on St. Mary's Line, not the big banner one, but the little twenty-four by eighteen. Those are-
I still, regardless, I wouldn't put them on every block on the street, whether the directional or what.
Right, so, the first one is the directional. When-
It's a pretty huge town, you'll never find it from walking up the river.
When, when we had the, you will remember, when we did the, the events at Mayor's Park, we permitted one sign on the corner of Fair Street, pointing in the direction of, so there was one sign permitted, and it was put in that morning and removed by the next day. So, it would seem to me, maybe a couple on Main Street, pointing up the hill, would be sufficient, coming up from the train.
One, one with the, yeah. The day of, maybe the day of.
Well, they're not things that are going to be seen necessarily from vehicles anyway.
No, they're too, they're too small.
They're meant for pedestrian scale.
They're pedestrian, they're pedestrian directions, so maybe one between Lund Terrace and, and Rock Street. Maybe one between Depot Square and, um, Stone Street. Maybe one between Fair Street and Gordon Street.
At that point, you can see it.
Maybe one every two blocks.
I wouldn't put more than three or four.
If you're coming out of the subway and you're a pedestrian where it'll either be on the train or whatever, you can put one on empty eight property just going in there. That, that takes care of most of it. If it's a day of, we can, we can allow like Fair Street and, or I'd say Garden and Campbell. That's halfway up.
Because by then you've, you've seen it, you've heard it.
I mean, he could also put something on, you know, he doesn't have signs that can actually just be put on the, uh, the poles, which...
No, he has the ones...
Which would be better.
He, he has the H stick and the thing, and, and his signs, his, well, there used to be one, they're not flexible. They're like on foam backing.
Yeah.
Corrugated plastic.
Yeah, the core board.
Sounds good.
So then you would envision them going in the tree, if they're on Main Street, in the tree pits?
That's what I would think.
The only place you're going to get them.
If they don't follow them, I mean, a lot of those tree pits have been very, you know, people spend a lot of time working on those tree pits.
Well, I mean, that, that's why I was asking the question, yeah.
So one between Garden and, and Church?
No, I'd put one right at the corner of Garden and, and one on each side, one in the corner there, and one in the corner of Campbell, and that should be enough. And then two, one facing either way down as you come out of the subway.
That seems sufficient.
So who do you have, three or four?
On the, the Campbell side, uh, the tree pits have been removed immediately.
Well, the closest one.
Okay. So one on, on the Garden Street side, one on the Campbell side, and one coming out of the subway.
Two. Well, we got one facing traffic and, or, and one facing...
Day of the event, right, just for the day of the... Just the day of the event.
The ones, the ones by the subway, I don't care if they're up for a longer period of time, people do whatever they want to.
You mean the one...
Treat it any differently.
Okay, so the, the three date signs, let's call those the three date, three date signs. Three date signs. What he wanted and had originally installed were two signs on Lund Terrace. Two, two signs on the west side of Lund Terrace, between...
I don't think they're needed. Anybody driving down, you're going to see St. Mary's, I feel.
Yeah. Okay.
Or was he trying to capture people coming from the lot?
They were facing...
When he sampled them?
Toward the lot. When he had them erected, they went, you, you only saw them when you were driving south on Lund Terrace. You didn't see them when you were driving north.
Got it.
So if you were headed down toward the river, you...
You just missed it?
Yes.
I'm sure they'll find it.
Okay. So the, the dated signs, the three date signs, uh, where do we want to permit those?
Those only get stayed up for as long as they wanted by the, at the corner of one, where the other signs are.
Okay.
And then you can put the directionals up there.
Corner of Lund. Anyplace else?
What about Fair Street? He asked for Fair Street.
Not forever.
I think it's for Fair Street, on Fair Street. And, um, on Fair Street, what I would be concerned about on Fair Street is, Fair Street is a relatively narrow street with relatively narrow tree pits. So putting a twenty-four inch wide sign in a tree pit on Fair Street, which gets very heavy pedestrian traffic, uh, I, I think that would be dangerous.
I didn't envision it. I guess I was thinking he meant at the other end of Fair Street where the, because he's, he's talking about hikers. So I thought he meant like down by Mayor's Field or something, but it's going to get run over there unless it's on the other side of the street.
It's not going to get so...
And he can put them down in the corner. That's town property as you enter.
That's actually a, probably a better idea.
Yeah.
Than the cars that see in two directions.
They're all over the, the...
They're at Phillips, Phillips Town. It's a good idea.
And then on the other, when you get to the other end of Fair Street, you'll see them on Main, not far off Fair Street.
Yeah. Anyplace else? I feel like that's got to be it.
Don't think anyone's going to miss this.
Other than skywriting, I feel like this is enough.
It's one of the best, right?
Banner on every street corner.
I'll respond to, I'll respond to John tomorrow.
Thank you, everyone, for enduring that. Time we'll never get back.
Never, never.
Finally, on the agenda's approval of the bill, batch number six sixty.
Okay, I make a motion to approve batch number six zero six zero in the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and four cents.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything from our patient audience? Michael?
I had a call from somebody today who said that, I think last week, presumably the sheriff installed cameras at the two, by the two entrances to Cold Spring on nine D and by the entrance to Nelsonville on three oh one. I'm just wondering if the village was made aware of that or if you know the exact purpose of the cameras?
Answers yes and no. Their license plates reader, um, in discussion with some board members, uh, it took us a bit by surprise. Um, we were not aware that they were going to be, and I can't, I don't think anyone could find anything on our records, that they were going to be outside of village limits. So first, first bad is that Larry had not talked to the office in charge, was working through this grant, um, through, I believe, the sheriff's department.
The DA's office.
And, um, and we agreed on, on, on these, on the license plate reader. I, my bad, I had no idea how big they were, how they were going to be installed. I don't think that was brought up. I had no idea they were going to be installed outside of village limits. And, uh, next thing I know, I saw them. I didn't even know what they were at first. So in following up with Larry, um, it, the company that was installing them, there was a quick turnaround on that. Not that that's a total excuse, but, um, I, I talked to Larry and what we should have done, and I talked to Richard, I haven't talked to Michael Bowman. But, uh, you know, apologizing for not getting permission to actually, or running this by them. I mean, I don't, I don't know how that went by. So to answer your question, took me by surprise, I think the board members by surprise, that they were installed and that they were installed outside of village limits. Larry's talked about the town and, uh, and Nelsonville, um, and they seem to be okay with it. I think Nelsonville's getting moved. I'm not sure if Phillips Town's going to further discuss the ones that were installed on nine D. And, uh, that, that's what I, that's what I know, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do I have to state my name again?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Denise Friedley, nine church street. What, what's the purpose? I, I don't, license readers, are they catching speeder? I mean, I was shocked when I saw it.
Not to catch spears, but to catch anyone that has, uh, any type of records or, you know, that they're in search of.
Who's viewing it?
What's that?
The sheriff's department is viewing it?
Yes, and I think they're held for, and I'm sorry, I, I don't know all those specifics and I will, will point up on this. But, uh, I, I think they, they keep them for a certain amount of time in the storage and then they go. But basically it's for cars that go through there. Um, it'll go right to a base or a command center somewhere if some, if it triggers it. I don't know why criminals would be in one car or how that works, um, but, uh, and then I guess the police would be dispatched to find that car or knowing where that car is.
I believe they're right out of the center in Westchester. It's where the image goes to.
I think basically the idea when we first talked about this a long time ago was if somebody is, is running from the police, you know, and they're trying to chase them.
Or missing, hopefully.
Pardon me?
Or missing.
Or missing. You know, if you are, you know, the amber alerts for children and so on, you know, cars come through and if you catch it on that, then you can say, all right, that car just went north on nine D or whatever the heck. So it's that sort of a thing, you know, just to, for somebody who's always running.
I think we should actually, we should follow up with Larry on this at another meeting.
It was, it was a shock not to know what was happening.
Yeah, it was, uh, I, I think we all had the, the same initial response. I thought it was a little camera or something somewhere. Yes, Phil? State your name for the record.
Phil Leffler in nine church street. And I just want to say, I mean, this is the first time I've seen you guys in a year and a half.
I know.
Yeah.
And you look so much more beautiful.
So do you.
In person. I, I know, I, I know. I look better in the lighting I can provide myself with. Uh, it's, it's really an emotional feeling right now.
It's good.
It's good to see you all.
Yeah, thank you. It's good to see people without their masks also. Oh, my God. I forgot.
And how comfy are the new chairs?
Pardon?
How comfy are the new chairs?
Comfy.
Oh, my God. I know what you're saying.
I thought you were happy.
You weren't talking about short term. You didn't see us leave, did you?
Yeah, I'm just settling in for a long spell here. John, I know you were here the last time for your terms. I don't know if you heard that we tabled that tonight.
I just caught it as I walked in.
So there'll be, it'll be reposted, the changes we made. There were like, uh, several, several significant changes we made since last week we met. And so in the lights of our council, we, uh, we have to send it back to the county with the new draft and then have another public hearing. So we'll schedule that or talk a little bit about that now, but just so you know, I, I mentioned that Denise and Phil, when they came in.
I was just coming in, yep, John Lake, Five Mountain Avenue, and I was going to say I wanted to thank you for considering that, considering our comments, obviously. They were seriously considered and I'm very grateful for that. And I would second what Phil said in terms of it's much nicer to be talking to you live than on screens.
Right. Oh, unmuted.
And totally unmuted.
But I loved the mute part.
No, I knew you did.
And I'd just conclude by saying I look forward to working with you and, and talking in the public hearing about the, you know, new draft.
So just to go over the, I'll go over just quickly the changes that we made, the significant ones. Uh, one, we changed it to hosted and unhosted. We added that. Uh, we added the rentals in the I one. Uh, we, we increased the number of, of, uh, short-term rentals permits from five percent to seven and a half percent. Uh, we also changed, uh, well, with the hosted and unhosted, the, uh, hosted, we are setting that at thirty-four, and then we added seventeen unhosted. Um, we included vacation rentals, meaning someone that wants to rent just for a week or two, I think, one or two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks out of the year, um, you know, consecutive dates, um, or, or seven consecutive days at a time. You can't spread them out two here, two there. Um, but it'll allow people to do that, or like West Point, if you're having a, an event like that, you might want to rent your house out. So we're allowing that. Uh, we reduced the liability insurance, um, and we did increase the fines. I think, I think that's all. Oh, and, uh, we just changed tonight from sixty to ninety days. And these will be, they'll, they'll be on our website when we reboot.
I'm sorry, you said with respect to the fine. I didn't hear you.
Uh, we increased them. I don't know what the increase is.
The five thousand?
So the graduated fines are increased?
One thousand, two thousand, five thousand for violations and one thousand, five thousand for illegal operation. That is someone who does not have a permit.
Yep.
I don't, I, if it's too much, I can find out some other way, but changing, you, you change the classifying code, the update to, these codes going to a type two. Can you, or whatever, I, if I said it wrong, can, can someone explain what that means? I don't understand what that means.
A type two seeker action means that the content of the law that is being proposed is primarily administrative. It has no impact on land use. It is considered to be regular and normal course of business within a municipality. Given the, and, and you can look at all of them on the village website.
I saw a lot of them on...
All there, and if you look at the differences, if you look at the file that looks like the differences for that particular law, you will see that they are almost all normal course of business changes or administrative changes, which are a, a normal, non-land use type of action. So for example, if you take a look at the Code of Ethics, which is chapter nine, the chapter, the Code of Ethics is based upon the New York State Department of State Model Code of Ethics. Has no bearing on land use at all, and you'll find them all like that.
And so how does that impact short-term rentals at all?
Doesn't touch it at all.
Nothing. Okay, that's all it was just...
The word short-term rental was not mentioned in any of those eleven chapters.
No, but I think as far as seeker goes, uh, we had, it's a type two.
It's a type two.
It's a type two.
Sorry, it's a type one.
Well, I think that's what she...
Well, your short-term rental is a type one, it will stay a type one.
Got it.
And these were, uh, we, we had sent this there. Maria discussed this with our planner to make sure how, you know, all the chapters, to make sure how they were, you know, what they were considered, what class.
Thanks.
Just a thought on the, the LPRs. There is, there is an LPR chapter in Lexible, which we did not, we have not touched yet because it wasn't among the, the priorities for the executive order, but that is certainly one that I can all put up on the drive. That may be helpful.
Does it have any bearing on legislature for re-mention?
No, it may be helpful in the conversation that you're, that we want to have about data storage, et cetera.
The conversation that I'd want to have is now that we see what they are, do we even want them? And the locations and whether Phillips Town and Nelsonville, um, are okay with, with leaving them.
I'll put it up just so you can see it and see if it's helpful at all to the conversation.
Okay, um, nothing else on the public hearing?
Yep. So, um, next week we have two public hearings. On July fourteenth, Bastille Day, we have the public hearing on the first, the first code update public hearing. Eleven chapters, which you see on the village website. It, the location for the public hearing will be here. We will ask people to sign in. As we do at all public hearings, um, we will go through each of the eleven chapters, uh, where we will describe the differences, essentially reading the document, which is the differences between the old chapter and the proposed chapter. And then we'll entertain any comments or questions from the public at that public hearing. Based upon the types of, and volume of comments and questions that we receive, we may or may not close the public hearing that night or hold it open until a, a later date and then close it.
Or inform the county and then reject them and send them back.
We don't have to send them to county, county only is looking at land use changes. So that's the first public hearing. The second public hearing is on Thursday, July fifteenth, at the Firehouse. It is on the two versions of the marijuana laws, which are currently on the village website. And there's a version that would put on the ballot a vote for retail sales. And the other is a vote on the ballot to prohibit, uh...
Consumption.
Uh, onsite consumption. So that public hearing is, I think it's, is it at seven?
Yes, seven, and at the Firehouse.
At the Firehouse, right. Same protocol sign-ins?
Both are at the Firehouse?
No.
Oh, the first one's here.
The first one's here, the second one's at the Firehouse.
We're, we've grouped them, uh, anticipating that the first eleven aren't going to be, aren't going to be controversial. And, uh, and then of course, marijuana law, I think that'll draw some attention, as will short-term rentals, and, uh, so we'll have those in bigger spaces.
How, how do you envision the resolutions for the code, um, updates to go? Is it a, will it be a resolution for the, the grouping or a resolution per chapter?
I'm assuming that there is no negative feedback about any of them. I would expect a resolution. As we pass a resolution establishing, you know, a public hearing.
There'll be a separate resolution for each chapter.
So I was absolutely wrong.
It's how we've, how we've done it in the past and I've looked elsewhere, so.
It's how we've done it in the past, and I've looked elsewhere, so.
So we'll have 11 separate votes?
11 adoptions of law.
Okay. And the intention would be to adopt and implement immediately?
No, I'm sorry, we already asked you a question.
So as of right now, is there any date for the parking plan, public hearing?
The parking committee is meeting tomorrow night, and I would assume that they'll be working on their recommendations to the village board. No, until they have that in hand, we've not set up a presentation by them to the village board.
Thank you.
Do you have a can?
Denise Friedley and I, and I apologize, has there been any discussion about continuing Zoom? For those who can't come to meetings, because you get a lot more people attending meetings.
No, we haven't, it's a little more complicated, I know that, but no, we haven't.
But isn't there a requirement, didn't Sandy give us, so there's a law going to for the state, something to do?
That's longer term.
That's longer term, and it's, the legislature has to be in session.
We can do both, right?
The open meeting law doesn't allow us. We can host, we can do it via Zoom if we have a method for people to join. We don't have that here, we don't have the technology in this room, or this builder, in this building to broadcast out. So that's why everything's being done in person.
And wasn't it so that it would just be Zoom so that they could see it live, but not actually communicate?
And not participate. The way the open meeting law is written is that board, that the public has to have access to any place where the board members are participating from, if you're going to do something for a teleconference or video conference, which would mean that not only if they're here, but if one of the members was at home, we would have to grant the public access to the board member of the mayor's house.
But it's not written for the public to be able to engage, just to view it?
Correct, and they have to, if they're not in this room, they have to grant access to wherever. It's complicated, it's archaic, it's being reviewed. But until it's, you see most communities, Phillips Town just announced all their boards now will not be via Zoom. They're doing theirs in person because of this.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I think that's it, oh, make a motion to adjourn.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you, guys. Thank you for your kind words, Bill, appreciate it. And John?